Gracious God, as we gather at the beginning of this legislative session, we pause to acknowledge your presence and seek your guidance. We thank you for the privilege of serving the people of Hartford County, and we ask your blessing over this chamber, its members, and all who will come before us in the year ahead. Grant us wisdom that rises above partionship, courage to make decisions that are just and fair, and compassion for every resident who lives or touched by our work. May our debates be marked by respect, our actions by integrity, and our choices by a genuine commitment to the common good. We ask for your blessing upon our communities, families, schools, and workplaces, strengthen us to be faithful stewards of the resources entrusted to us, and to continue to work on ensuring progress, justice, and unity for our county. Bless this entire year of service. May our work here honor the trust placed in us and reflect the very best of Hartford County. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Robert. Council may have general consent to skip to item five on the agenda and then return to four thereafter? Thank you. Agenda five, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. First, we have council appointments. Hartford County Public Library Board of Trustees may have a motion, please.
Council President, I move to approve the appointment for Councilwoman Imhoff to the Hartford County Public Library Board of Trustees.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Been moved and seconded to approve Ms. Imhoff. Is there any discussion?
I'm just thrilled to be able to assist our public libraries and continue on with their mission, and I look forward to being a part of their Board of Trustees.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mrs. Roberts.
Aye.
Mrs. Imhoff.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodle.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero on the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Traffic Safety Advisory Board may have a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion for the appointment of Councilman Chief Janjordano to the Traffic Safety Advisory Board.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Imhoff. It's been moved and seconded to approve Mr. Janjordano to the Traffic Safety Advisory Board. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mrs. Roberts.
Aye.
Mrs. Imhoff.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodle.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero on the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. James V. Captain Jim McMahon, Commissioner on Veterans Affairs, may have a motion, please.
Council President, I make a motion for the appointment of Councilman Chief Janjordano as council liaison to the James V. Captain Jim McMahon, Commissioner on Veterans.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robert. It's been moved and seconded to approve Mr. Janjordano to the Commissioner on Veterans Affairs. Is there any discussion? I would like to recognize Mr. Brown is in the audience with Mr. Johnson, I believe it is. Yes, couldn't think of his name. And I just wanted to recognize them here this evening. So, Mr. Janjordano.
So, I think this is a great honor. Unfortunately, I'm the only one in my family that has not had military service. My father was a Navy vet, my sister was a Navy vet. My two nephews are in, one's a Navy vet, the other one's still in the Navy on a nuclear ballistics sub. My brother-in-law's an Army. But I've worked with Mr. Brown a couple times on some things, and I greatly appreciate all the vets. I go to, try to go to the different events around Hartford County, and anything I can do, help them, I'll reach out to some of the commanders and everything and see if anybody needs any help from us. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mrs. Roberts.
Aye.
Mrs. Imhoff.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodle.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero on the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Hartford County Sheriff's Office Liaison may have a motion.
Council President, I move to add Council President Vincenti as a secondary liaison.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve myself as a secondary liaison. Is there any discussion?
Council President?
Ma'am.
Can you tell me, who is the first liaison? I didn't realize there were secondaries.
Yes, it is Mr. Janjordano.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And I may comment as well. I think it's an honor to serve on that commission or board or liaison to the office. I already serve on a couple other boards and commissions for the sheriffs, have spent several trips in cars with them so that I can see firsthand what they do each and every day for us. So, it's an honor to serve. With that, any other comments? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mrs. Roberts.
Aye.
Mrs. Imhoff.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodle.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero on the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Hartford Living Treasurer may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve Hazel Newsome as a Hartford Living Treasurer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Was that Ms. Imhoff?
Yeah.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve Ms. Numsen as a Hartford Living Treasurer. Is there any discussion? Ms. Imhoff.
Sure. I was able to read up on the Flower Lady before tonight's meeting, and I am just thrilled to be able to present this to you this evening. My grandmother was a master gardener as well. And so, reading up on a lot of your information really reflected on her watching me grow when I was growing up. And I'm just beyond thrilled that you are a longtime resident of my district.
Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mrs. Roberts.
Aye.
Mrs. Imhoff.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodle.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero on the negative, the Hartford Living Treasurer is hereby approved. Executive appointments, Director of Planning and Zoning. Before I ask for a motion, I'd like to bring Mr. Overbay up. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President, members of the council. I come before you this evening on behalf of the county executive, and I respectfully bring forward Mr. Matthew Crop for your consideration and confirmation as the new Director of Planning and Zoning. As you're all aware, Mr. Crop was named the Acting Director in June of this year and was formally submitted over the summer during the council's recess for your consideration in tonight's first meeting of this legislative session. Mr. Crop has been a tremendous asset to the Department of Planning and Zoning, having served 30 years in a variety of capacities, and really truly knows the department from top to bottom. So, very pleased that he has stepped forward with a willingness to lead a tremendous team of individuals who serve the citizens of our county, and would ask for your favorable consideration this evening of Mr. Crop in that capacity.
And I think it speaks volumes to have Mr. Grimm in the audience who worked with Mr. Crop and is here to support him this evening. Thank you.
I believe he will tell you, he served under the tutelage of quite a few excellent directors, Mr. Grimm being one of them for sure.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve the appointment of Matthew Crop as the Director of Planning and Zoning.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve Matt Crop as our new Director for Planning and Zoning. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Bennett.
I plan to vote yes on Mr. Crop, but I was hoping if Mr. Overbay, if it wouldn't be out of order to ask him, just because the letter we got was dated August 27th about the request to have us vote on this, which was less than a week ago. When did the county executive's office determine that they would move forward on Mr. Crop? Just because with the lack of time, I didn't have the opportunity to do things like schedule a meeting, to get to know him, to talk about, you know, what I see as the needs and priorities of planning and zoning, to ask him for what he sees as the needs. You know, like, I didn't have the opportunity to do true due diligence. If it wasn't for his outstanding resume, you know, I would be left feeling a little perplexed about having that lack of time. So, I was just curious, was August 27th when you all made the decision? Or if not, why did you wait till August 27th to send over the letter letting us know?
So, we, I would say, and I'll speak on behalf of the county executive in this case, and serving in an acting capacity, I believe the county executive was incredibly pleased with Mr. Crop's addition to the department and his leadership that he's provided. So, that decision, I believe formally was made over the summer. We do have, we follow kind of the legislative needs of the council in when we submit items for consideration. So, we stayed on schedule for submitting in time for introduction in this evening's meeting. Certainly, as always, if you're interested in time with the directors, we'd be more than happy to make Mr. Crop available, and I'm sure he would certainly want to speak for you. But if you shake your head affirmatively, be absolutely willing to make himself available to you to talk through his direction and his beliefs about planning and zoning in the future of Hartford County.
Mr. Riley.
Yes, Matt, I want to thank you in every zoning effort. You were very valuable to me. I appreciate that, and I thank you for your service for Hartford County.
Anyone else? So, if I may, I think I can speak on the last 11 years. You've absolutely been an asset. I can remember through redistricting and all that process leading into that. So, master plan and absolutely comp zoning. So, I feel very confident in your ability and your willingness to reach out and make us aware of anything that we need to be aware of. So, it's my pleasure to support you this evening. Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mrs. Roberts.
Aye.
Mrs. Imhoff.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodle.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero on the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Hartford County Public Library Board of Trustees may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the appointment of Carol Wright as Chair of the Hartford County Public Library Board of Trustees.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Robert? Yes.
I think it was a tie.
Have a hard time understanding which one it is. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I will say that I did call Ms. Hassler at the library tonight, and glowing, glowing review of Ms. Wright. Ms. Wright, are you in the audience? She is not. Still a glowing review. So, Ms. Dixon, whenever you're ready.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mrs. Roberts.
Aye.
Mrs. Imhoff.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodle.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero on the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. James V. Captain Jim McMahon, Commissioner on Veterans Affairs may have a motion, please.
Council President, I move to approve the new appointment of Colonel Troy Johnson.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve the new appointment for the Veterans Affairs. Is there any discussion? Ms. Imhoff.
When we were able to tour Aberdeen Proving Grounds, Nolanda and I were able to sit and have lunch with Colonel Johnson, and we were able to learn a lot about him coming to Hartford County, and we hope that he really definitely just makes Hartford County his home. And we hope that your kids have been able to adjust well to here as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mrs. Roberts.
Aye.
Mrs. Imhoff.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodle.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero on the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. And Colonel, if you would take a minute just to stand and be recognized. Thank you, sir. Agenda number four, presentation of proclamations. Hartford Living Treasurer Hazel Numsen. Ms. Imhoff, if you would step down in the well. Ms. Numsen, if you would come forward and bring whoever you would like with you. You can stand. Whenever you're ready, Anthony.
Whereas Hazel Numsen has resided in Hartford County.
Allison, they're going to want you centered. Good, I'm sorry.
That's right. Whereas Hazel Numsen has resided in Hartford County for 65 years, during which time she raised two daughters in the Fallston area. She was a charter member of the Fallston Swim Club and was featured in the Aegis for her work with the polar bear plunge. Ms. Newsome also has traveled to every state in the United States, often departing from Fallston Airport. And whereas Mrs. Numsen was widely known as the Flower Lady, she had shops in Fallston and Bel Air and became a Master Flower Show judge in 1971, as well as a landscape design critic and instructor with the Lecturer of Flowing Flower Arranging. The Friendship Garden Club in Bel Air, which recently celebrated its 51st year, evolved from a flower arrangement class held by Mrs. Numsen. She appeared on the program People Are Talking with Oprah Winfrey in the late 1980s to discuss flower arrangement and design, where she created an arrangement for Oprah's personal use and the WGJZ program sets. Additionally, she contributed to landscape designs for the Fallston Swim Club and the Lutheran Church of Good Shepherd. And whereas Mrs. Numsen was a professional color consultant, helping people choose the best colors for them to wear, she was featured in Self Magazine in 1995 after becoming one of the first nationally certified massage therapists in Hartford County. She continued practicing massage until 2020, when COVID-19 pandemic began. Now, therefore, we, the County Council of Hartford County, Maryland, on the second day of September 2025, do hereby proclaim Hazel Numsen a Hartford County Living Treasurer. And be it further known that her lifetime experience and contributions to the Hartford County community will provide a permanent record which will recall the past, inform the present, and guide the future of Hartford County, and that her memories and history will be recorded by the Hartford County Public Library Oral Historian and will become part of the oral history collection of the library.
Where's the mic?
I just want to say thank you, and it's a pleasure to live in Hartford County. I love it. We're happy to have you. Thank you so much.
Are they done with photographs? Congratulations. Absolutely.
Congratulations.
Agenda number six, special presentations. The Klein Family Center with the LEAD Program. I'd like to invite up Heather Diamond and Monique Burgess. Good evening, ladies.
So, I'm Heather Diamond.
Hi, my name is Monique Burgess.
So, we actually just wanted to come in and tell our community about the program that we're working with. We're based out of the Klein Crisis Center, and we work for the LEAD Program. So, law enforcement assisted diversion. And then, if you don't mind, we're just going to share some things that we do for our community.
Sure.
So, just like Heather had said, we are with the LEAD Program Law Enforcement Assistant Diversion, which as of now, we work with Bel Air, Aberdeen, and Havdi Grace Police Departments. We really focus on the low-level nonviolent crimes that are committed in this area, but they're also due to, they have root causes. So, due to trauma, addiction, mental illness. So, you would be surprised how many low-level crimes, such as trespassing, theft, those things occur daily, but they are really just a gateway to just understanding the individuals who are suffering from, excuse me, or who are basically trying to navigate their social and mental and behavioral health. So, we literally go out with the police officers, and we accompany them on those type of calls, and we provide service, whether it's directly getting them back to the Klein Center or just helping them and supporting them. So, our services include a comprehensive assessment. So, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so our goal is, out of the Klein Family Center, we do assessments for mental and behavioral health. So, our goal is to get anybody a comprehensive assessment at the Klein Center. And then, that's where we'll see a nurse just for basic triage, and then they will see a licensed counselor so they can kind of base anything from that. And then, Monique and myself, we actually do the case management within the community. We actually follow, instead of just seeing them at the Klein's and letting them leave, like a doctor's office, we actually follow them with the community, whether it's, you know, for appointments or if they're in trouble with the law. We actually go to court with them sometimes. Yeah.
Right. And I just really want to focus on the collaboration. Like you said, it's very important because most times, the individuals who are dealing with these crimes, that's the first thing that they're focused on. Am I going to jail? And so, helping them understand, like, there's a way to navigate our criminal injustice system, but also there is a way to navigate your mental and behavioral health. It really helps them understand and be able to communicate the support that they need, but also to the linkage to our partners and our stakeholders. Also too, because of course, everyone wants to know, well, what's in it for me? Why am I even focused on LEAD? Why should I even pour into it, give my opinion? So, we basically have six goals, and I really want to focus or hone in on the improvement aspect because of public safety is very important. Being members of our Hartford County, but also just watching individuals who have interactions with the police, and they're saying, well, you know, hey, I grew up here, or my grandparents were here. You really understand why the police have to interact the way that they do. So, I think it's very important that not only are we focusing on our public health, but we're also focusing on public safety as well. And then, also just having our interventions reduce those negative impacts or those negative opinions. Okay, so when you see the police, you automatically assume you're getting arrested. That's not the case. So, having a case manager there with the police actually provides ease and lets them know, like, hey, there is another way for us to address what's going on. Also too, we want to be able to strengthen our relationship, not only with the individual, not only with the police, but also too with our, with our community partners. And so, by having individuals have that support from our case managers, we're able to really understand exactly where they are and where they need to be. Sometimes, when we come across individuals, the first thing that they're, you know, worried about is housing. I understand that that's very important. And of course, understanding that means understanding the resources that are available, which means they're also limited as well. And so, by being able to strengthen our community partnership, we're able to say, okay, I understand that you're trying to focus on housing, but your mental and your behavioral health is important, but also it's going to create stability so that you can be successful with your housing. So, I think that it's very important that with the LEAD Program, we are case managers, yes, but we are also on the front lines along with the police, and we are also building that community partnership to be able to lean on the resources that are available and potential resources that can grow. We're not, you know, we don't know of a need that's available until people are saying, hey, we noticed that there's a primary group of people that need this type of resource. You build it, they will come. So, what's in it for the officers? And I believe that this was the main document that really had our police stations really had their buy-in. And you heard it multiple times. The officers are burnt out, but not because they're getting those type of calls where they're actually going out and they're on the scene, and they're actually dealing with what they're supposed to do. They are burnt out from being social workers. So, how do we fix that? We take it back out of their hands and we put it back into the case manager's hands. So, being able to really help them understand, like, okay, those nuanced calls that you're getting, they've decreased. Why is that? Because you have a case manager that's going out and letting them know, hey, I understand that you've been taught, or maybe you've been groomed to call the police when there's an emergency, but this type of emergency, feel free to call the LEAD Program. Call your case managers. So, also, that interaction, like I said, you see the police, sometimes you think, oh, I'm automatically getting in trouble. So, now, we're building that rapport between the police officer and those individuals in the community to be able to trust, to go out and even make that phone call and say, hey, I actually do need help. Do you have a case manager that's available to help me? So, we do have two different referrals. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, so, right now, we're seeing a lot of social referrals. So, Monique and I are the case managers. Just us. So, a lot of the social referrals, I just want to use as an example, actually, because to me, it was my first, I think, referral that I got that I really felt, you know, that I've done something. I had a young man that was under shelter because it was storming in Havdi Grace, and they called the station saying that they thought maybe he was trespassing. So, the officers of the Havdi Grace Police Department actually went out there, and they just tried to chat with him. It was a young man. He was just trying to stay out of the weather. So, when I got in contact with them, I actually went and I spoke to him, and he was homeless. He was 19. He wasn't sure where he wanted to go in life at that point in time, but there was, I think, some mental health underlying issues. He wasn't sure where he wanted to go in life at that point in time, but there was, I think, some mental health underlying issues. So I actually um, was able to get him into the Klein Family Center where we kept him overnight for a few days so we could get sure his, make sure his mental um, and behavioral health was stabilized. He was not on the streets. He was fed. He was safe. And we actually were able to get him into our welcome on shelter in Belkamp. Um, and then stop referrals are that the crime has been committed. Um, as of right now, I don't see much stop referrals and um, I don't think Mo does either. But you know, instead of making those arrests, um, it's just a social referral. We try to figure out, okay, this isn't this as a crime. However, there's things in the community that people just don't know about that Mo and I know about. Um, and then we can just kind of help them better themselves and make them happy and safe.
And also too, I will speak to the point of the social referrals, just like you said. Uh, they believe that that gentleman was trespassing. So if you think about the amount of money that would have been poured into actually charging him with trespassing, getting him either a state's attorney, or maybe he did have someone who would be willing to pay for that lawyer. All of those funds were actually diverted and he was actually able to to lean on the community resources that were available to actually get him started in the right direction. So actually, when you think about it, in a whole, we really did save time and money. That's also important as well. Um, and then the very important thing that really just centers around all of our work, our operational work group meetings that we actually have in the police stations with the lieutenants, the sergeants, the captains. Uh, those are are very important because we're able, not only able to review the current cases that we have, but we're able to work on collaborative efforts. We're able to actually review protocols. We're actually able to understand, okay, is this person ha- ever seen a citation? Or was it just a warning? Uh, so you know, by us working very closely with the police stations, we're able to really become knowledgeable about how to navigate not only the criminal justice system, but even when you are approached by a police officer, what should you do and what should be your next steps? Um, so as you say with the.
Can I just speak on that? With these operational uh, work group meetings, I think also as a uh, so we work with Bel Air, Havdi Grace and Aberdeen. And I think as a community, we've all came um, together really well for those police stations because we have to touch base with everybody that we have in the community. So I think that it's maybe um, brought a stronger bond that we are all, you know, taking care of our area, Hartford County, and not just our little areas that we have. Um, we just all work as a team to make sure Hartford County as a whole is taken care of and the individuals that live here. I think that's been something really good.
And so we feel also by bringing this to the council's attention that we will be able to spread the word about lead, get everyone on board. And actually not only increase participation with the other, uh, so the Maryland State Police and the sheriff's office, but also anyone else who's a stakeholder who probably is not very knowledgeable about lead. And so and how we can expand and actually help Hartford County as a as a whole.
So I'm one of those individuals that's not very knowledgeable about leads. So my question right out of the gate is, with all of your investment in these young folks, has it uh, lessened crime?
I feel it has.
Do you have any statistics or anything? Just curious.
So I don't have any statistics with me, but the police station would be able to provide those statistics because part of our operational work group meeting is going over those numbers. How many nuanced calls did you receive? Uh, what is the number of, you know, retention rate? What is the number of people who are actually called, but maybe they need to be trans- uh, transported to the hospital versus going straight to jail? How many people actually went to jail? I just had a lady ask me, okay, how much money does it cost to place someone in jail for thirty days? I didn't have that answer.
So is it possible for you to follow up at some point with some numbers? Uh, I would prefer you guys do it if you don't mind.
Of course.
And just email it to council administrator and uh, she'll disperse it amongst all of us. Um, and and again, I I appreciate the compassion and and trying to work with everyone and making them turn a corner or helping them turn a corner. But I'm just curious to see uh, what impact the organization's had, if that's manageable. Mr. Bennett.
Hello. Um, good evening. It's good to be with you again. It was really nice to meet with you all earlier this year and hear about this work. And then shortly after we met, there was a really great news story that went all over about your work in Aberdeen. And then there was uh, just like a huge bit of public applause in Havdi Grace over your work there and celebrating you there. I think it was Sergeant Pe- Pets who put that out. Um, and it's been really, I think, um, exciting to see that partnership and to see that recognition, especially in Aberdeen and in Havdi Grace. Um, I was just wondering if maybe you could share a few more of those like personal stories, like like that were shared in the news story um, that was on TV uh, of, because I think Aberdeen's where you've been the longest.
Yes.
If you could share maybe some of those stories out of Aberdeen where um, people said, oh, wait, like there's help out there that can make me stop. Because a lot of these people you interact with are like, the police might interact with them seventeen times in a month over the tiniest stuff of like, they're putting trash on the ground on the sidewalk because they're eating there or that kind of stuff. Um, so I thought maybe you could share some of those stories that were featured that. Um, there was the one woman who was interviewed at the train station that I thought was a really powerful story.
Yes, I was gonna say, um, and and to that story as well, there was a gentleman who had a family. Uh, he, they were homeless and they were parked out in front of the library, which as you know, at that point is considered trespassing. And so uh, the officer approached him. He did share that, you know, he was having some ti- some difficult times. And so we were able to, right there on the scene, I'm able to get the information from him. And honestly, like he, he was one of those people, he was a little bit resistant to help because the stigma of having a mental health concern or or even a mental illness. And so, you know, just me having a conversation with him and letting him know like, listen, that's that's life. You know, that you encounter people who may have a mental health um, illness and you just don't even, you don't know because you don't ask. And so we were able to kind of like dispel the stigma, able to get him therapy. But also too, in that matter of time, we worked on getting a job and he was able to get a job within that two weeks. And then he was able to find an apartment, an apartment that was going to be able to sustain him and his family. And so he is currently working. He's no longer, you know, parked out there at the library. And so he was able to, just with that, with that motivation. Because sometimes when you encounter individuals, they are like, okay, if you're not going to do it for me right now, then I don't want to do it. And so I honestly, having a case manager that can creatively say, hey, let's try a different approach because we know that the end result is jail and we don't want to do that. So let's try a different approach. Let's really address the things that need to be addressed. Let's work on a, on a, a good timeline, because that's important as well. And let's see what the turnover, you know, leads to. So I thought that that was uh, really important. And honestly, my first couple of days, that's what I had encountered. And of course, you know, you see the homeless individuals, they are at the park. And sometimes they have a negative stigma on them, or they're sitting around, they're trashing the park. And so honestly, just being able to work with community partners who hand out food and clothing and things of that nature, and then going back to those individuals and saying, hey, we've get, we've been given a wonderful opportunity to be able to hand things out, to be able to meet here all at one time. Let's work on keeping this park clean. And honestly, in a matter of of minutes, park was clean.
Mm-hmm.
And so to have an officer come back and say, what did you say? Oh, I just said, hey, it takes a village and we all need to keep it clean. It worked. And now we're able to meet there, we're able to hand out resources and we're able to just really keep the word spreading. So that way you get, one person turns into five people, which turns into ten people. And now you've had a whole village come because they heard about the things that you can do and the resources that you have.
And I know you shared a little bit about how it takes work off of officers' plates. One of the things I really liked, one of the Aberdeen police officers said in the news story is, you know, oftentimes they interact with these people that they want to help, but all the tools on their tool belt aren't really equipped for the situation. And there's people that really just need a hand up versus handcuffs. And I thought that was a great line, but just those people that, they're not really a danger to anyone. They're just stuck in a rut that somebody needs to help them out of. And it's so nice that our municipal police have you to call and say like, hey, there's this person I've interacted with so many times in the past month. Can you just see what's up and see if there's any way we can help them? Um, so that they're not the ones who after duty are trying to Google things and look things up. Because, you know, talking to our municipal police, that's what they do. Is they're like, uh, my heart breaks for this person, I wonder what I can do to help them. But they're not trained, they're not knowledgeable, so they need someone else to, or they spend a lot of their own personal time trying to do it.
Yes.
So I really thank you for that. How can we help in getting you the opportunity to share your work with the sheriff's office and the state police? Is there anything that we could do to assist in that? Like, have you had meetings or?
So we personally have not. I do think, you know, we have higher ups that work on that. We are part of um, University of Maryland, Upper Chesapeake. So they actually are, they have the grant, um, that's who we're under. But I think for us, we just want everybody to know about us. Um, sometimes it's like, oh, well, you have this group that's in your community, so you guys divert arrest. However, it's not, we're here trying to make our community better because everywhere you go, there's always going to be maybe an arrest. But we're not here because of bad things. We're here because it's our community and we want to help. Um, so I just think we're really here to let everybody know that we're here. We're here for Hartford County, we're here for our community. Um, and this is what we love to do. That's just, we're just trying to get our word out.
I knew, when I turned that way, I knew you two were going to be on it. Ms. Robert.
A great presentation. And I've um, heard about what you guys have been doing for quite some time. I did have a couple of questions. Um, one of which is for juvenile arrests. Do you guys intervene at all with the juvenile arrests?
So um, we do not. We do deal with eighteen and older. However, um, if that comes, so, you know, we have a really good relationship with our officers. So if they do say, you know, hey, this is a juvenile and it's behavioral or mental health, we still at the Klein Family Center, we can still help them and we can take them there. Well, they'll do a evaluation and then they will get the resources that they need as a juvenile um, to, you know, further better themselves. Um, we don't handle juveniles on the lead program.
Okay, and and you might not have the numbers, but how many referrals do you believe you're getting coming from the community and or the police?
I just got three in the last two days from Havdi Grace.
Okay.
Um, and again, it's not like that every day. However, it's just, you know, with the officers that we work with, they're really into it. They're really into this lead program because they don't want to arrest people that don't really need to be arrested. So I can speak within the last three days, I've gotten three.
Okay.
Um, and then Monique cuts them off.
I'm sorry, I laugh when I get this question. Uh, we had went to a meeting previously and they were stating that you were only supposed to have like twelve to fifteen people on your caseload. I have thirty-six.
Yeah. Well, I was a s- I I used to work for social services and juvenile justice and they would say the same thing. And I had sixty, not thirty, so I completely understand. And my last question is, I know you guys are in the municipalities. Is there been any conversations about coming into Edgewood area, Jopetown area to provide some of those same services with our officers? Um, we are primarily with the sheriff's department. We don't have um, any other um, local police. So uh, has that been a conversation that you've heard from the higher ups at all?
I think that's our goal, you know, to serve all of Hartford County with all um, the departments that is higher up than us. However, with the Edgewood, you know, area, that would be the sheriff's department. So I think our main goal is to be with Hartford County Sheriff. Um, I don't know how we get there, you know, higher up than us, but yeah, that is our goal.
Okay.
I know to get all of Hartford County. I mean, but also the more we talk, it's more than maybe the more our grant would be funded. And then the more than just Monique and I, we would be maybe three people, maybe four people.
Exactly.
You know what I mean? So the bigger people know about us, the more support we have. And if people like what we do, then we can just handle it all around and have help instead of that many people.
I I agree. And it keeps people home, not in jail, so.
And I think also, I feel like for me, as in Havdi Grace, people are now, we're comfortable coming to the police station if they're in need and they're not afraid. They're like, hey, can I please speak to Heather? You know, and I just, as for me, I look at my police officers, I've always grown up that they're there for my safety. So and we're kind of breaking the stigma, they're not here to be mean, they're here to help us. So.
Ms. Imhoff.
Thank you. So I'm very familiar with Baltimore crisis response. Um, so with that being said, is, has there been any discussion about you guys servicing people under the age of eighteen, especially when they require law enforcement to be called for severe mental health issues?
I do not know that answer. I do know we do, um, we are trying to work with the mobile crisis of Hartford County. I know they deal a lot with adolescents, um, but right now that's kind of above us. So I think our manager at the Klein Family Center actually had a meeting today, um, speaking about all of that. So we'll see.
I would just say, especially um, if we were to be able to get you um, in with a partnership with Hartford County Sheriff's Office, partnering with the school resource officers would be tremendous. Hartford County was a pilot program for handle with care um, in twenty twenty. And so I think that it's just becomes like a full circle moment. You know, if you're responding out to the household for, let's say, a parent's mental health issue, um, being able to provide a holistic family unit support, um, in addition to providing ongoing services for the kid who, let's face it, are highly likely to have secondary trauma from everything, um, would be a fantastic option. With all that being said, what is, if someone needs to get in touch with the lead program, what is the best way for them to get in touch with you all?
So my name's Heather Diamond.
Mm-hmm.
And that's Monique Burgess. So if anybody, it's easier just to call the Klein Family Center. Um, and then our phone number, do you want me to tell you?
Yeah.
Four four three, six four three, two four two two. Sometimes people get the one eight hundred next step number confused with the Klein Family Center. So you can just ask for myself or Monique and um, the girls up front know exactly what to do.
Sounds good.
And, you know, that's how you get ahold of us.
Awesome.
Or the police stations.
Anyone else? Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for having us.
And if you can get us some more information, we would appreciate it.
For sure, of course.
Thank you. Agenda number seven, approval of minutes, legislative day twenty-five dash zero twenty-one, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Uh, Mr. Janjer-Dana, please read um, resolution zero fourteen twenty-five in this record, please.
Resolution zero fourteen twenty-five, master water and sewer update fall twenty twenty-five as introduced with attachment, introduced by Council President Fincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution providing for the adoption of the master water and sewer plan, fall twenty twenty-five update, a copy of which is attached here hereto and for submission of the plan to the Maryland Department of the Environment for its approval and implementation pursuant to Title Nine of the Environment Article of the Maryland Annotated Code. Public hearing scheduled on Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. in these council chambers.
Thank you. Can you please read also for agenda number nine, introduction of bills, bill twenty-five dash zero zero eight, please?
Twenty-five dash zero zero eight, chapter nine of Hartford County Code, Youth Commission as introduced, introduced by Councilmember Bennett, an act to repeal and reenact with amendments, article seven, Youth Commission of Part Two, Non-Binding Advisory Boards of Chapter Nine, Boards, Commissions, Councils and Agency of Hartford County Code, as amended, to reestablish the Youth Commission as a council-appointed commission to provide for the term of student members and generally relating to the Youth Commission. Public hearing scheduled on Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. in these council chambers.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Dixon, can you put me on there for a co-sponsor, please? Thank you. Anyone else at the opportunity right now? Mr. Janjer-Dana? Uh, Ms. Robert? Okay. Thank you. Agenda number ten, introduction and consideration of amendments, we have none. Eleven, call for final reading of bills, we have none. Twelve, enrollment of bills, we have none. Thirteen, unfinished business, we have none. Uh, fourteen, new business, memorandum of agreement, Office of Information and Communication Technology and the County Council of Hartford County, Maryland. Ms. Allegi.
Thank you, Council President. Um, this is a mem- you have a memorandum of agreement. It's between the County Council and the Department of I C T and the Administration. You guys will recall back at around May, when you logged onto your computers, suddenly there was a computer access notice that had never been there before. You had to consent to that notice before we could get into the operating systems, which obviously we need to use to operate. Um, and the, 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 we didn't have any warning that the notice was going to be placed on the computer. We had to consent to it. Um, totally understandable, we're using the systems. However, there's a little bit of concern on the council's part and on my part with regard to the access to our communications, our emails, our data. We are a separate branch of government while we use the computer systems and we have to use them properly. We also need to retain confidentiality and privacy. Um, so reached out to the Administration. Um, they worked with us, you know, happy that they were able to do so. I drafted this memorandum of agreement, had a couple of changes, negotiated it with the Administration and I C T. And it, sometime over the summer, we were able to come to a final agreement where obviously council was agreeing to use the systems properly, but at the same time, the Administration and I C T is agreeing not to have unfettered access to our communications. They need to get into that communication, they will contact us first. If there is Public Information Act requests that require them to get into our data, they will appoint specific count administrators, that will be the only people that do that. They won't look at it, they'll provide it to us, we will, we will handle it. Um, and so, you know, I was very happy that they were willing to do that. If you'll also notice, if you've logged onto your computer more recently, the notice has changed. So it was tailored, and again, I appreciate the Administration doing that. They tailored the access notice so that it fits with the council. So that's what this agreement is. It's already been approved by I C T and the Administration. They've signed it, I've signed it for legal sufficiency. Obviously, the council as a whole has to um, discuss it and sign it and approve it so that it can be fully executed and we can provide it back to the Administration.
Thank you, Ms. Allegi. Anyone have any questions at this point? Mr. Riley.
Who are they contacting to get access into our email?
The council administrator or her designate. So what they will do is if they have to get into, and there wouldn't be a reason. It really would be for a Public Information Act request because we, we get those and they get them often. And sometimes if it's for communications involving the council, we don't have our own server. We cannot access any of that information. We don't have I T. people. So they will have to access whatever the search terms are. They will contact the council administrator or myself and say, we've had a request for this communication. This is what fits, this is what hits. And then they will provide all the documents to us. And then I will review them for legal issues and get them out and those kinds of things. But there'll be one point of contact and in the agreement, it is the council administrator or her designate.
So if you want access to my emails, Mila's going to give the approval.
No, I don't.
I said the Administration.
The Administration, if they, she's not going to give the approval. She's going to be contacted by them.
Okay.
To say, and then if it's not a legitimate reason, then we're not.
But if I think it's not and she does?
Well, it, we would have to provide written, written permission to them. And it's only go, we're going to review that and we're going to discuss it with you. We're not going, you're not going to have unfettered.
What if I don't agree with who you're discussing it with?
Discussing what with? The?
The access to my emails.
I would only be discussing it with the council administrator and you. There's nobody else to discuss it with.
And what, is it a vote or if I say no, it doesn't happen?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll have to look at it on a case by case basis.
I'm not, I, I would not be in favor of that at all.
Well.
I can't imagine any council member in here would.
Well, the, the other option is there's no limit and they will just have unfettered access without telling us at all. That's.
We can't go back to the drawing board because we weren't involved in that discussion.
So if I may.
Sure.
You weren't involved in that discussion because we were trying to fix this without spending at an absorbent amount of taxpayer dollars to bring our own I T. department in here, to bring our own server in here and all the technicians and probably have to change all of our equipment here too. So we did this to save the taxpayers' dollars. Simple as that.
That sounds good.
It's a fact.
But that's a farce. Because all they gotta do is ask me whether I permit them to get into my emails.
Did they the last time?
And that would not cost them a dime. No, but we could put it in the memorandum.
But what I'm saying is, did they the last time?
But we could put it in the memorandum. Doesn't cost a dime.
That's just unbelievable. I can't believe anybody would vote for that.
I appreciate your position on that, I do. But I gotta tell you, I commend Ms. Allegi for the efforts that she made throughout the whole process and the Administration for sitting and talking and discussing this through. And at the end of the day.
Without each council member.
Doesn't matter.
Well, it does. It does to me.
Okay.
And we'll see how the rest of them feel.
That's fine. Anyone else have any comments? Mr. Bennett.
Um, Ms. Allegi, thank you.[1735.05]
Um, Ms. Allegi, thank you, and, you know, I recognize, uh, the legal complexities of negotiating an M.O.U. and getting, you, because you have to have both parties be willing to sign it.
That's exactly right.
In order to move forward. So, I, I'm sure there's a million things we would wish we could put into this M.O.U., but you got to be able to get the administration to sign it to join you in that, and if they can't or won't, you have nothing.
We have nothing.
So, I, I recognize those complexities and negotiations, and I thank you for a job well done. My question is, this M.O.U., or I guess we could say.
M.O.A.
M.O.A.
Doesn't, yeah.
Uh, understanding agreement.
Yep.
Um, I don't have a law degree to know the difference between those two words. But, um.
Inconsequential.
Um, it says it was entered on the eleventh day of July. Have we been operating under th, this guidance?
No, so the only, so the pro, we were wait, we had to wait, we were hoping, I contacted them in May, we were hoping to have this wrapped up by the June council meeting. That didn't happen, we had to break for summer break, I didn't hear back. Over the summer, we finally heard back, so it's not been operating until it'll be fully signed by you guys. The only thing that they did agree to do, which was to our benefit, was to change that notice. So, the notice, which was extremely broad, that, as you can see now, is very, but very much tailored to the council. So, that was changed, but this will not be in effect until it is, if it is approved and then signed. So, that, the only thing that was changed was that notice, um, and the administration agreed to do that because, and that, it mimics exactly what's in the agreement, and it just narrows it and says, you know, it's, this is, this is council that is accessing, they're using it for council purposes, and then it, it limited that general language that said, basically, the administration can get into anything for any reason without any notice, without telling anybody anything. So, that was narrowed.
Yeah, and I, I guess I'm just asking, because I'm trying to understand, there is an incident over the summer in which my email was gone through.
And that was, and luckily, they, they operated that way.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. So, when that, it was a Public Information Act request, and when that came in, I.T., they, that's what they did, and they didn't have to, this wasn't, this wasn't in place, but as a courtesy, because we had worked together, they said, we are going to identify that the number of documents that are responsive to that request, we are not pulling them, we are not looking at them. What would you like us to do? I said, provide, provide them all to me in a secure drop box that only I can access. We have to respond to a P.I.A. request, of course. They have to be reviewed by law, so that's exactly what they did. And that was very beneficial.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Uh, a lot better than just handing off hundreds of emails.
Or, or the administration reviewing those emails and determining whether they're responsive to a P.I.A. request. Um, because that's what could happen, it's not our server. They could have pulled all your emails, reviewed them, and provided them to the attorneys, done a legal review, I have no doubt about that, what's responsive, what can be disclosed, what can't. But that's what, that's what we want to avoid, and that, that was avoided.
Yep.
So.
Ms. Emhoff?
Um, so, with all the M.O.U.s and M.O.A.s that I've ever worked with, there's an expiration date and a review date, would that go along with the administration turnover, or would that be a yearly, like?
It, it, there is an, and, but it can, at any time, can be.
Can be revised.
Of course.
Or nullled on either party.
Well, it even says, uh, uh, there's, there's provisions in here for amendments, that, that can always happen, as with any other agreement, but you don't, there, you don't want to, there's no reason to put a termination on it because.
You want it to keep going.
You want it to keep going, but that's not to say it can't be amended, and there's amendment provisions in here.
And I'm, I'm somewhat familiar with the public information requests, but in my outside world, I've, because of working in trauma, my notes have been subpoenaed on many occasions.
Subpoenaed, yes, and that's a little bit different than public information act requests.
But in those situations, you do.
Concept.
As many layers of assistance and legal support in between you and the requestor is appreciated.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
So, in, in the, in my experience, that has definitely been helpful, and I trust any additional, uh, coverage.
Coverage, yeah, yep.
Firewall, if you will.
Exactly.
That's it, and that, that's all you can try to do.
Yeah, don't get the impression that I was throwing stones at your negotiations. Okay. I know that, but my colleague at the end kind of said that.
I don't take that one.
Here's what I'm trying to say, is, have you asked them whether or not they would agree to, whether the council member themselves would, would approve it or not?
No, they, when we did our negotiations, they, they said they wanted one point of contact, one point of contact at the council, to then say, are, you know, we, we need to give written permission, instead of having seven points of contact or six points of contact, and that was, that was the conver, that was the conversation and the back and forth.
Are you telling me it's too, it's too much work to go through one to six?
I don't, I don't know.
But you're telling me that's what the administration says?
That's what the, the, when they drafted and put ca, comments back.
I know that, but have you negotiated back that, hey, can we talk to each council member?
No, but we will, we will do that any, I, I don't.
No, you will, but you might not go with what I say.
But that's not their issue, we can handle that. That, that's what I'm saying, I, they don't, if we have one point of contact, that doesn't mean that we're not going to discuss it with you.
I don't talk about discussion, I'm talking about approval.
And we'll have that conversation.
Mr. Janjordano?
So, as I understand, before, there was no conversation, they could go into our emails, they could review their, our emails without us ever knowing they were in.
One hundred percent.
Seeing those emails. Now, with this M.O.A., it says they're going to notify you and, and, and Mila that they want to look at our emails, and you're going to then come to us and say.
Absolutely.
Hey, they want to look at your emails, and we could say, no, I don't want them to look at our emails. What happens if they say, we're going to do this anyway?
Well, then they'll be breaching this agreement.
And, and what consequences do they have by breaching?
There, there, I mean, at that point, we'll have to determine litigation, injunction, to prevent them from doing so, no one wants to get into that, but correct, if they do that without our written permission, then they'll be breaching this M.O.A.
Will we, how will we know?
I, well.
That's my other big question, I know.
And that is a very fair question, but without council having five million dollars to secure our own I.T. server. We will have no way of knowing whether or not they are accessing. Now, tr, it's trust.
Right, okay.
But, but, and if, and if we find out that they are, then obviously that's breaching this document, but you're right, we do not have an I.T. department.
And we did, and we did look at the cost of, of.
We did.
Server, and I know, because I was in those conversations, a server backup, then
we probably have to have all our own equipment, it'd have to be monitored, we have to buy the software, you know, and then all the, the phone system, so it was cost prohibitive, I, I understand is, that, but I guess, you know, I want to know, hey, you, 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 you file into my emails, I, you know, I want to, I want to chop your hand off.
And, 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 and that, that unfortunately is the situation that we're in, where we do not have a separate server like some other entities do. It's a mi, it's a money issue.
Yep.
It's something that a council as a whole can certainly continue to look at, um, but right now, the bottom line is, we don't. It is there, i, it's one server, and we don't know. But now, at least, we have a signed document that says, we cannot do it, we will not do it without your written permission, we don't have to give our written permission. That's, there, there's nothing that mandates that. Like I said, P.I.A.s are a little bit different, because you are required to respond to P.I.A.s, but now it has to go through us. But all we can do is at least have this document so that they don't do that, then we've got some ammunition.
Mr. Riley?
But Megan, my, my objection is to who gives the permission. The rule is it's going to cost five million dollars. No, it doesn't, we could put in the M.O.U., call Tony G. Jordano if you want to get into his emails. Call Pat Fincenti if, if you want to get into his email. It doesn't cost anything except six or seven phone calls. So, this five million dollars is nothing but a rule.
Okay.
It is.
Fine. Anyone else?
Council President, I move to approve the memorandum of agreement.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second?
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. It's been moved in a second to approve the memorandum, and it's time for discussion. And again, Ms. Allegi, I want to thank you for all of your endeavors to bring this forward. Uh, Mr. Vice President, I want to thank you for your time in those meetings, um, and I want to thank the outside sources that we brought into those meetings to discuss the possible cost of setting up our own server, and, um, it was expensive. Anyone else with a comment? Mr. Mr. Janjordano?
Yeah, just, uh, we brought in our own, we brought in outside people to look at it. I also contacted I.T. people that I deal with on a regular basis to ask them about this as well. Pretty much got the same, same answer, cost, uh, difficulty, uh, of that, and how you actually can track if somebody gets into your email without your knowledge. Um, it's very hard, uh, we don't know if it's been done previous before we were told, it, it probably wasn't, but, but who knows, because you, there's no way to tell. That, that's the biggest issue, is that, I wish there was a way to tell if somebody got into your email and you, you know, had a riddle, little red light that popped up and said somebody was in your email, but it's not there.
Mr. Bennett?
Um, as we just wrap up debate, I want to encourage all my council colleagues to consider something that in my many negotiations trainings has been drilled into me, which is, don't let perfect be the enemy of good. So, this might not be everything you hope to have in, in the agreement, but it puts us in a better place than we were yesterday, and then it can always be revisited, so in the meantime, it's good to have something better than what we have right now.
Okay. Mr. Riley?
And I wish this council would get a backbone and say no.
Oh, Lord, okay. Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Emhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Absolutely no.
Mrs. Bullsaddle?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one in the negative, the memorandum of agreement is hereby approved. Harford TV, letter of request to Verizon for local channel, Ms. Allegi?
You're going to make me do this again?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, so, under the code, you guys are the, um, authorizing agency that grants franchises to the cable, cable T.V. services in the county. If you'll recall, back in December, the Verizon franchise agreement was up for renewal, that came to you guys, it was approved by Bill, it was effective in February. One of the provisions that was built into that renewal, at Harford TV had requested an H.D. channel. Their channel currently, there is no option for that, and they wanted Verizon to provide an H.D. channel. That was approved as part of the agreement. So, now, H.D. T.V. has actually made that request of Verizon to effectuate that H.D. channel, but because you as a body are the authorizing franchisees, they need the letter of request to come from the council as a whole, so that's what this letter is, it is requesting that their channel thirty-one will be provided as an H.D. channel, and that has already been approved in the franchise renewal agreement that was effective in February. That's what this letter of request is.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone with any questions? Mr. Ri, uh, Janjordano?
Is it, is it mirroring the channel that's out there, or is there going to be different programming? I, I forgot to ask that to somebody.
I don't think it's going to be different programming, it's.
Same channel?
And Kelly Jarra, and I can, she can clarify that, but it's going to be, it's, it's, they just want to have an H.D. option instead of just the standard definition option.
That's all.
Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
I'm going to have to shave more often if we're in high definition.
High def, that's true. Magnify.
So, can that be added to the budget?
Absolutely. You approve the budget, so.
All right, I'm hoping that's it.
Council President, I move to approve the letter of request by Harford T., uh, letter of request for Verizon local channel.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved in a second to approve, uh, the request. Any other discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Emhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsaddle?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the letter of request is hereby approved. And then, um, over the summer, we had an executive order twenty-five oh-two that was withdrawn, and I've asked, uh, Mr. Overbay to speak to that, please.
Thank you again, Council President, members of the council. Um, was asked to speak in reference to, um, executive order twenty-five zero-two, which as the council president indicated, was submitted over the summer. Um, about a week later, we submitted a withdrawal of executive order twenty-five zero-two, which was, um, intended to create an office of general services. Um, county executive continues to look for ways to create an efficient government, and we were looking for some efficiencies and frankly, alignment of activity within various departments, and, um, that executive order was drafted to do so. Uh, that said, there are some timing issues associated with the transfer of appropriations, specifically those spelled out in section five sixteen of our charter, which identifies the last quarter of the fiscal year for transfer of appropriations. So, um, while the county executive still believes this approach is a valid one, I do believe that you'll see this in front of this council again at a future time, uh, when we can make sure that those transfer of services happen in a way that can have the funding that supports them.
Fair enough. Ms. Allegi, anything to add?
Uh, just, I just want to make sure council understands that it, this was submitted to us, I think, end of June, June twenty-fifth, it would have become effective sixty days under the charter, under four thirteen, as a reorganization, they can certainly do this, can certainly reorganize these divisions in that way. The, the problem is that, that we recognized right away is that you, we had just approved the budget that appropriated thirteen point five million dollars in procurement to Fleet, because Fleet was currently under procurement. And five sixteen of the charter, as Mr. Overbay indicated, you cannot transfer funds between departments until the fourth quarter of the fiscal year, which means those funds that you had just approved to the tune of thirteen million dollars could not have been transferred from procurement to D.P.W. So, if this would have gone in and become effective, basically, Fleet would have been unfunded for eight months and couldn't operate, um, so, you know, we questioned why it was sent over at that time, it, it didn't make sense, we couldn't allow it to go through, so we contacted the administration and, and they recognized that problem, and they did withdraw it on July third. So, that, that's the reason that, uh, that that had to be pulled.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes. Um. Agenda seventeen, comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon, is there anyone signed up?
We have one this evening, Mr. President. Leslie Stein.
Good evening, ma'am, name and address, please.
Good evening, members of Harford County Council and fellow residents. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Leslie Stein, and my address is eight one zero Fairwind Drive, Bel Air. As a citizen of Harford County, I'm here tonight to discuss a critical issue facing our growing community, the future of our fire services. For generations, we have relied on, uh, the unwavering dedication of our volunteer, of volunteer firefighters that I am truly grateful for. The world is evolving, and the demand on the first responders, firefighters have grown significantly. Call volumes are up, training requirements are more rigorous, and quite simply, it's becoming more difficult for volunteers to leave their jobs and families to meet the public's growing needs. While we are always grateful for our volunteers, the data is clear, to ensure the safety and security of all Harford County residents, we must invest in a more robust system that includes significant increase in paid professional personnel. This is about public safely, safety. Having paid firefighters provides fire stations with staff twenty-four seven, with crews Having paid firefighters provides fire stations with staff 24/7 with crews ready to respond in minutes. This is a consistency that is vital. When a fire breaks out or someone suffers a cardiac recs, a cardiac arrest, cities, uh, seconds count. We can't afford to have delays in response times. Furthermore, a professional force provides stability and growth in Hartford County. This reduces the risk of not having volunteers replenish those that are officially retiring and allowing for those currently volunteering to make this a full-time job. In addition to bringing a stronger workforce in this field and retaining those that are seeking a paid position elsewhere. I know there is a cost and a primary concern on how to pay. The average salary for a paid firefighter in Maryland is approximately 60,000 per year, not including the benefits of health insurance, retirement and training cost. These costs are substantial. We need to consider them as an investment in our community, an investment for our well-being and protection of our livelihood and our, uh, that is priceless. I want to be clear, this proposal is not to attack our volunteers. This is to help those that want this as a career in their hometown and to protect, the protection of the public. The volunteers we currently have are the backbone of our community. Our counting is growing. I urge the county council to prioritize this funding and future budgets and to start working closely with the volunteer companies to create a seamless transition. Let's not wait for when a tragedy happens to act. Let's make a decision now and to ensure the safety of our community for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
All right, with no more speakers, we'll go to 16, business from council members. Ms. Robert, we'll start with you.
Good evening. Um, it's, I guess I'll start by saying it was a busy summer, um, and I did, uh, do a lot of, um, activities. I'm not going to mention them all because we would be here all night, but to highlight quite a few of them, I got to be the keynote speaker for the, um, sheriff's class of 38 for the, um, Hartford County Correctional Academy, and that was a great experience. I, uh, did a bullying workshop for extreme family outreach. Um, they had a retreat for about 50 children. Um, that was a great experience. Apparently they're still talking about it, so that makes me feel good that they got a lot of out of it. Um, I did, uh, meet with the Hartford County Humane Society, got a nice tour, brighten early in the morning, um, and got to see the behind the scenes functions of that. With that being said, I know, um, Councilwoman Emhoff and I, uh, then did, visited Shadow Cats, uh, this summer, uh, to see what they do as well, um, and hoping that at some point, uh, we can bridge the gap with those two agencies. Um, also, I... Let's see. I helped clean the grounds of Edgewood High School before school started to make sure that that was good for everyone coming back. Um, and then I attended multiple, um, ribbon cuttings and ceremonies, um, et cetera. This morning, I went, uh, with Dr. Bolson and walked through the halls with all the principals of all the schools in, uh, District A, along with, um, Abingdon this morning, um, as well, um, meeting the superintendent of the schools. And then, uh, just FYI, we do have a, uh, community advisory board, uh, meeting on Monday, September 8th for our community area. Um, and if you're not registered and would like to attend, um, I'm going to be there at the Symposium on Addiction and Recovery. It's all day, Friday, September 12th. Um, it looks like it's going to have a great, um, speaker and conversations, um, workshops that would assist anybody, um, regarding that issue. And I think finally, the NAACP is having our annual meet and greet, which is called Boots on the Ground. It's gonna be fun, um, for everyone and you can come out and, uh, wear your best boots is what I'm saying, and that is on September 25th at the Van Diver Inn.
Thank you, Ms. Robert. Ms. Emhoff.
Good evening. I would like to begin by welcoming all of our students, teachers and staff back to school. This is always such an exciting and busy time for our families, including my own. I am glad to be back here with my colleagues as we resume our council meetings. It was a full summer with community events and meetings, but it feels so good to be returning back to these chambers and continue the work to, working together to serve the people of Hartford County. I'm honored to announce that I have formally filed to have my name on the ballot in 2026 for Hartford County Council, District B. Representing the residents of District B has been a privilege and I remain dedicated to ensuring that the priorities of the community are protected. A couple of the events and meetings that I attended over the summer was we, uh, attended the Humane Society of Hartford County. I also toured Hartford County Airport. Uh, I met with Hartford Land Trust. I met with 3P Protect Perryman Peninsula and got a tour of Perryman. I attended the Mako Summer Conference, DIY Grand Opening, Lafayette's Farewell Tour, National Night Out, Charm City Run Grand Opening, and then, uh, Nolanda and I were able to attend the Arrow Center for Education Playground Grand Opening. Some upcoming events, um, as we kick off the school year, um, I want to invite everyone out to the We All Serve hike at Poplar Grove Park this coming Saturday, um, is to support, uh, military families. I'm happy to report that my brother-in-law will soon be returning back from his deployment later this month, fingers crossed. Um, we have the Edgewood, Joppa Town and Joppa Cab Meeting this coming Monday, um, followed up on September 11th by the Abingdon Cab Meeting. The Bel Air Festival of the Arts, I'm probably, I'm dipping into your territory, I apologize, is September 14th, which is always a really great event. So if anyone hasn't been, I strongly encourage. And then, um, then the Folsom Cab Meeting is September 24th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emhoff. Mr. Janjerdano.
We gotta follow those two. That's gonna be, that's gonna be a tough one. So, um, good evening, everybody. Uh, like my other two colleagues before me, I think it was a busy summer. Uh, attended both NACO, Mako conferences, did the Bel Air and Havant Grace Fourth of July parades, which, uh, I, I love doing and got, got an award, so, which is also great. Uh, Hartford County Academy Corrections graduation, uh, went out and met with Sherry Nolte at the Hartford Center and then attended Hartford County Public Schools meet and greet. And then there's also a list of grand openings and ribbon cuttings, everything from the Bel Air Farmers Market 50th Anniversary to the addition at Rockville Manor to Hartford, uh, Harco Cricket Union 70th Anniversary. Um, and then last week was probably one of my most favorite things that I've been doing for 15 years is, as an alumni at Bel Air High School, um, I do watermelon and gelato, uh, or Italian ice for the Bel Air football team. I had 75 kids show up. Uh, I did John's Italian Ice at, uh, one of their meetings, I think on a, on a Wednesday evening, and they absolutely loved it. They have no idea when it's coming, um, but, uh, they scarf down the Italian ice and the coaches really appreciate it. I really appreciate it because when I played football, somebody came out and brought us ice cream and I thought, hey, one day when I'm older, if I can do it, I'm going to do it. So luckily I've been able to do this for 15 or 16 years. Um, but, uh, I, I lost track of how many years, just got some pictures that pop up every now and then, so, um, so I certainly want to appreciate that. Um, and then something that's been on my mind, um, that I've seen, you know, every time you turn around, there's a school shooting or something, so, um, it, it just comes to my attention that, you know, some schools don't have SROs, um, given the tragedies involving some of the shootings across the nation. I believe that somewhere we should have, um, patrols, uh, for the schools that don't have SROs, even if it's in the morning and the afternoon, hopefully to keep, uh, deterrent and maybe further on, we can work on the budget to increase SROs in all the schools. Um, I certainly would value that discussion with the county executive, Sheriff Gaylor, Dr. Bolson, somehow we can work together, um, through the year to, to get that, that we can patrol these areas, make things safer. It's better to be safe than sorry. I did post something on my, on my, uh, Facebook page, but I, I think we need to look at that, um, and we don't want to be somebody next when that happens to somebody and maybe just that little bit of deterrent can certainly help. And finally, um, I was in a magazine on the front cover of the Insurance Agents and Brokers, which, uh, I had a nice little picture taken and I posted that, so, uh, never been on a cover before, probably will never be on a cover again, but, uh, pre, nice honor. And, uh, with that, I'm done. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Janjerdano. And Mr. Riley.
Yeah, it's just, uh, want to congratulate North Hartford Middle School for celebrating their 50th anniversary. Um, again, as everybody said, it's a busy summer, but I'm not going to bore you with all the details, but Tony, I'd like to work with you on the SROs if that's possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Ms. Sadows.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I hope all the Hartford County students and staff had a great first day back to school. My aide and I also attended a lot this summer. It was very busy and, um, I look forward to heading into a productive fall legislative season. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sadows. Mr. Bennett.
Hello. Good evening. It's good to be with everybody. Um, you know, something that, uh, well, two things I want to share before I get into my summary of the summer. The first is at, uh, my church this past Sunday, our preacher challenged us with something that they were asked at the beginning of their career, which is who are you working for? And, you know, at the time, being freshly out of, uh, seminary, they listed off every person above them in the diocese and, um, the person who asked responded, you work for the people in front of you. And I thought that was a good reminder for me entering this upcoming year, that who I work for is the people I serve. Um, and, and that's true for all of us, that, uh, it's not about who's above you, it's about who you're above and how you're helping them get up. So that was something. And the second thing I wanted to share, um, was that, uh, this is going to be our last full budget year as a council before the next term begins. So this is our last full year together to make our impact on this community. And who knows which of us will be here? Councilman Riley's already gone in the middle of me talking. Um, so, you know, who, who knows who will be with us? And so I think it's very important to think about, um, you know, in scouts, the end of each week of camp, we would sing Scout Vespers, which says, softly falls the light of day as my campfire fades away. Silently each scout should ask, have I done my daily task? Have I kept my fire bright? Can I guiltless sleep tonight? Have I done and have I dared everything to be prepared? And so I challenge myself and others with, I don't have another year guaranteed, I have this time right now. Have I done everything I could with it to make sure I helped my community the best I could? And so that's something I think about a lot right now, especially with one year left. Uh, but that being said, you know, we get 10 months to talk. Summer for me is a time to listen, so I tried to do a lot of that this summer, to listen, to learn. Um, I didn't write this down, but in the public comments sharing about fire, I just wanted to say you're absolutely right to have those thoughts and those worries. Uh, when I meet with our volunteers, I hear the same thoughts and worries. And I hear from them, they're very concerned that we're going the same path we ended up with, uh, emergency services, with our ambulance drivers, um, where we're going to wait too long until it's too late to wait. And so, um, I really hope that we move in the direction of being proactive today or else we'll pay for it tomorrow. And so just, thank you for bringing that forward because I don't think enough in our community realize, uh, what a boiling point we're approaching, uh, when it comes to that. I got to learn a lot about the history of our community this summer. I attended Underground Railroad tour, tour, uh, with the Havant Grace Colored School. I also attended the 60th anniversary of the last graduating class of Havant Grace Consolidated School from 1965, which was a really, really great experience to, to sit with those students, um, to hear their stories and to hear the stories of those who lived through the transition. And I think it's also good for us to remember, there's people we served on the council with who are older than the class of 1965. So, uh, school integration is not that long ago in our history and it's good while the people are with us to talk with them and, and learn from them. Um, I got to do the farm tour where we visited farms all around Havant Grace. I got to see Mr. Tibbs, uh, I would, I would say surfing on the back of a wagon as we went around his farm. I didn't understand why he was standing without holding on to anything, but it was very impressive. Um, I got to visit several communities, including Perryman, Abingdon and, uh, the Greenway Farms Community and hear about traffic concerns that people have. Um, and I'm working with our state partners to work on fixing those. And I also got to attend a briefing from the comptroller to hear how the federal budget is coming down to us locally to better understand, uh, those things so they're not so much a surprise. Um, I also advocated this summer, so I was able to get the word out about SNAP ed funding being cut, which helped, uh, connect farmers with our local schools and educate kids on how they can eat healthy. Um, and through getting a lot of press coverage on that, it looks like we're going to have some community partners who are willing to step in and keep those programs happening in some form, even if the money's not there anymore. So I was very happy that we were able to help amplify that message. Um, and then I have two pieces of legislation coming up, one you heard of tonight, uh, which was inspired by youth coming to us and saying, we want to be a part of what you do. And I think when a teenager says they want to do something, the only way you can answer is yes, because normally they just want to nap. Um, but the second piece of legislation with, uh, yesterday being Labor Day, is thinking about how can we put our county employees in a place where they feel empowered to live a fuller life and take care of one another? And so I'm very excited for that. Councilman Gee and I have had many conversations working through that, meeting with our local unions to talk through that, and I think we've landed on a really good place that they're really excited about. So that will be coming in the next few weeks. Uh, but that is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Uh, we'll move to agenda 15, business from the president, but before I start, I mean, as I always say, uh, when we, when we lead into this summer break, there really is no break. My colleagues are busy every day, every evening, running somewhere for an event, a community event, a, a business opening, um, an issue, a constituent issue, um, and this past couple of months was no different. Um, and I too have a list, some of them, uh, my colleagues have already covered, uh, but, but a couple they have not. And first out of the gate, I want to congratulate Samantha on her wedding this past Sunday, her and Billy Beery, uh, so she is now Samantha Beery, not Harris. Uh, great event, beautiful day. Congratulations. Uh, again, I attended the first day of school up at, um, North Hartford Middle School. Uh, it was an early rise. I think we were out of bed at 4:30 in the morning to be up there, bright eyed at 6:30. So, uh, kids were very enthusiastic. I think that middle school has 890 students and I think every one of them went past us while we were standing. So, um, but, uh, it was great to be with the superintendent, uh, Mr. Bolson, the Hartford County Public School staff, teachers, uh, volunteers, uh, the county executive, Sheriff Gaylor and his command staff, um, and the SRO there. And, uh, while I mentioned SRO, um, appreciate Tony's email or his Facebook post and his comments because I too believe that we need SROs wherever possible, but we're talking 28 people. We're talking millions of dollars. And, and I know, I'll be the first one to say, if we lose one life, uh, it's no comparison, but the reality of it is, more importantly than the men and the money, it's the year, year and a half, by the time you identify them, you fund them, you train them before they're in place. So this is a long process, one that we continually have conversations on every budget cycle when we try to find, uh, more funding for public safety in the sheriff's office. Um, but then later on, we went down to Abbotton Elementary School where we were joined, as Ms., uh, Robert said, by the state superintendent, not, not just Mr. Bolson, but by the state superintendent. Uh, events that we all attended, I'm sure you heard about Lafayette's Farewell Tour, but the Hartford County Farm Fair, uh, and the farm tour that Mr. Bennett talked about, uh, ex, uh, extreme amount of ribbon cuttings and grand openings and businesses and constituent services, businesses that were in, had issues, uh, that we don't even want to talk about, uh, that we were able to, uh, weigh in on and give some help to. Uh, several retirements, I want to give a shout out, most recently, uh, to Moose Harple, uh, for his, uh, nearly 32 years of service to Hartford County DPW and Parks and Rec. Um, and, uh, he's going to be missed and, and I hope he enjoys, he and his wife enjoy their retirement. Uh, had an opportunity to meet with Ms. Levy, our new health officer in the office here, uh, for quite some time, catch up with her. I attended the Mills Annual Crop Show at Clear Meadow Farm, and again, it was an outstanding event, extremely well attended, but unfortunately, I had to leave early to attend a, uh, meeting at the, uh, Maine Sheriff's Office here in Bel Air, uh, to check up on Lieutenant Burgess and, uh, get an update on the details of his, uh, well-being and the, uh, all of the, uh, details surrounding the incident on 95. Um, but Lieutenant Burgess is a 29-year veteran of the Hartford County Sheriff's Office and as many of you have heard, was involved in an incident on 95 last week, uh, being struck during a vehicle, uh, pursuit. Uh, we ask that you keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers as he continues to recover from his injuries at University of Maryland Shock Trauma. Um, I want to give, uh, condolences, um, uh, unfortunately, over the past couple of months, we've lost several of our key community members and Jeannie and I wish to express our deepest condolences to the family and friends of Sergeant Dietz of the Hartford County Sheriff's Office. Sergeant Dietz passed away suddenly on June 30th and had a, uh, nearly 30 years of dedicated service to the Hartford County Sheriff's Office and Hartford County citizens. Uh, he touched the lives of many of our, of the citizens throughout the years in various positions and he will be absolutely missed. I want to remember Charlie Oliver, uh, from Aberdeen, who was a member of the Aberdeen Rotary Club for over 50 years, never missed a meeting, never missed a meeting for over 50 years. Want to red, uh, mention, um, Paul Magnus's mother, Josephine Magnus Murtaugh. And I want to mention Jeannie, uh, sister, Linda Yarsh, who passed away. So all of these individuals had great impact on their communities and will dearly be missed and we ask that you keep their families and friends in your thoughts and prayers. And with that, uh, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.